It's exactly 7 o'clock, satellite time. I'll let the minutes reflect that the entire board is here as well as some members of staff and an audience as well. Just a couple of announcements before we get in to the full agenda. The first item is that we had two guests, Mr. Mark Landon, discussion about a vape shot at 1832 Penfield Road. That matter has been withdrawn, so if anyone is here for that, that matter has been withdrawn. And then, I know because it has been a little bit of a hot topic overall, the Pet Hotel, that Pet Hotel remains as a held item and again will not be discussed until July 13th. And again, if anyone happened to be here for that, that is a held item. That information is on our website and then I'd also encourage folks is that if our agendas are ready every Friday afternoon, and I would just encourage you to take a look at the agenda to make sure something is on or not on the agenda from there. I will next look at our approval of our minutes. We have the May 25th, 2016 minutes before us and would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, the minutes will stand approved as written. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Monthly reports, I know that the 10th of the month is our official day to get them in, so they're starting to come in and those that may not have gotten all of their monthly reports in, they have got tomorrow and Friday, so we look forward to those, rest of those monthly reports that come in. We do not have any public hearings this evening. As I indicated, we do have a guest with us and with that, Dr. Anthony Sterpi?
Sterpi, that's correct.
All right. Discussion of a chiropractic practice at 2082 Five Mile Line Road. And Mr. Castello, if you would like to give us a little overview, please.
Thank you, Anthony. Dr. Sterpi is looking to work in the same office that Dr. Wanamaker is in. He and I talked a while back. I indicated that if he were just going to be working for her as a, in addition to the existing business, he would not have to come before you. He was very clear about the fact that it is his separate business that he would be operating. He would also like to have a sign attached to her sign in his letter to you. He also indicated, he showed a picture of the sign noting that the base of the sign is starting to become deteriorated. You want to take that sign out and replace it, raise it up 12 inches and then place your sign underneath the existing sign.
Yes, that's correct.
Why don't you talk to the board a little bit about your hours of operation, the intent of the business?
Okay. Do I have to stand or?
Oh, no.
Okay, cool. I didn't notice you guys standing.
Please don't.
All right, cool. So, my hours of operation, they have varied a little bit. I just recently started working at the Chiropractic College as a graduate assistant, so I'm aiding about 20 hours a week over there, three days a week. But right now, my hours are Monday, Tuesday, from 10 to 8 o'clock at night and then Friday, I'm there when I get out of work at the school from 2 until 8 o'clock. And then I have Saturday hours as well between 9 and 2 o'clock. So, I'm there kind of part-time, but Dr. Wanamaker is kind of helping me get on my feet for the time being. I just graduated last year and I just kind of started my business entity as of November. So, I'm looking to kind of, you know, she's taking me under her wing, kind of, you know, teaching me this and the other thing. But I'm different in the sense that I offer a little bit different style treatments than she does. I do a lot of soft tissue technique associated with my traditional chiropractic. So, for those of you who are not familiar with typical adjustment, I kind of like to refer to it as, it's chirojargon, it's like a joint fart. Essentially, what's happening is you're kind of adjusting or moving the joint and it's separating and there's caps around that joint which encapsulates fluid and gas is released from that joint. So, it's kind of like that, but I like to target the pain zones or I do kind of trigger point therapy. I've noticed that pain is really generated big time from the muscles and I like to kind of focus on those before the adjustments. Karen is a little more in the traditional sense of just kind of joint manipulation. She does do some soft tissue, but not to the extent that I do and I hope to expand on the soft tissue and kind of expand outward into the community with that as well.
So, are you considered a partner with Dr. Wanamaker or you'll have your own practice just working out of the same office?
Just working out of the same office. I'm a completely separate business entity.
Okay.
Will you have any employees that report directly to you?
Not at this point. When business takes off, I hope to at least have like a receptionist, something like that. But for the time being, it's kind of, with chiropractic, it's a little different in how you grow and how you bring on associates and stuff like that, but that's like way, way down the line.
So, if we're going to make an appointment, talk to you directly versus?
Yes, my personal number is kind of, it's bare bones, like I've started from scratch pretty much. So, you'll get a hold of me on my cellphone. If I don't answer, you leave a message, I'll call you back and we'll set something up.
Gotcha.
Now, the hours that you were just saying that you're working, are those all hours in which Dr. Wanamaker's practice is open as well or are you going to be there when she's not there?
Our schedules kind of do flip-flop. There are days where Monday, she's there and I'm there, so we kind of bounce around each other. She has three rooms though and I typically stick to one. On Tuesdays, it's, she's more heavy in the morning and I'm kind of more heavy in the afternoon. Wednesday, she's, I think it's her busiest day of the week, but I'm teaching, so I'm not there. Thursday, she's, she's out of the office, working at her secondary facility and then Friday, she's done by 12, so I'm there by 2 and she doesn't really come in every Saturday, maybe every other Saturday, but it's a pretty light schedule.
So, it sounds like you work together as far as?
Yes, yes.
Accommodating the space and parking and things like that.
Jim, could you share the sign? Did you pass that along?
I'm sorry, Tony, here's the sign, the existing sign. While they're looking at that, can you give me an indication of what your color scheme is going to be for your sign?
I believe her, from what I remember, it's going to match hers exactly. It's going to be, my sign guy said that he would match the color, the gold, the red there, I think, and even the wood grain, but he's going to do it on an aluminum thing, so it's not really tacky looking or anything, but it's going to match.
And it's still within the square footage of the sign ordinance itself?
They, I've got to check, Tony, and see what the exact square footage of that sign is. They're entitled to 20 square feet per face.
Okay.
The other part of that too is, is the historic preservation board will also have to review that sign, which I don't even get to them as soon as I see.
It is within the historical district and?
It is, yeah. The site is within the district.
What was the other district?
Four corners.
Four corners, okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
And hence why it's before the sport, because it's within the four corners district and the sport has the jurisdiction of that particular district. So, we'll want to just check that. Have you ordered your sign yet?
I have not.
Okay, so before you do that, I'm just going to encourage you to make sure that you're in contact with Mr. Castello so that as you're preparing that and you're making the modifications, that it's, fits, you know, within the ordinance, so that you're not setting yourself up for a variance or having to come back and have a discussion about that. So, before you do that, I would just encourage you to work with Mr. Castello.
And our policy is to send that off to the board for review to make sure everyone's comfortable. Once I get that back and we'll get to the historic preservation board as well, once that comes back and I can verify that it meets every bridge requirement, someone will get it on.
Okay.
Yeah, so we ordered, we left them work just via email, because I'm liaison to the historic board, so they'll take a look at it, put the colors and everything, so that you're not wasting your money or someone else's time.
Right, yeah, I was just, I wanted to get kind of a preliminary idea going.
Okay. Very good. Board, other questions, your comments for the doctor?
No.
When do you hope to open?
I've kind of been there for a little while, just kind of getting started, but I'm fully operational and ready to rock.
Okay. Other questions or comments for? No, right. So again, I would just reinforce to make sure that you work with Jim on the signage. Once you have a kind of a sketch or a digital copy of what the sign looks like, if you get that into Jim, Jim will get that around to the board electronically.
Okay.
And then certainly work with him because he is our liaison to the historic preservation board as well. All right, staff, anything that we have not discussed that you believe should be part of the record?
Nothing other than the fact that this site is also, as you know, shares parking with the other sites that Dr. Pagnotta owns on that, on those properties.
Yes.
You are responsible for ensuring that you're not overtaking somebody else's spaces.
Mm-hmm.
And that's worked out fairly well since Dr. Wanamaker's been there, so it shouldn't be there.
Yeah, she's mentioned that she hasn't had any problems with that.
Okay, good. Anything additional for the board that we should be aware of as part of your proposed practice at that location?
Nothing I can think of.
All right, very good. Good luck. Stay in contact with Mr. Castello.
Okay.
And he'll get that out to the board and you will see Mr. Castello and most likely Councilwoman Metzler at the historic preservation board.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you for your time. All right, we will move on to our action items. Our first item is the jewelry shop at 1759 Penfield Road. We had a public hearing at our last town board meeting and at that time, all the materials were submitted. I think the board had all of the questions answered. I would ask Mr. Castello and Mr. Valentine, has anything new or additional been submitted that the board should be aware of?
No, Mr. Spars, I think the only comment that comes to mind is the fact that he had not finalized his parking detail yet, running before the board, public hearing. So, if you're inclined to approve the application, the condition should be that a submitted parking plan come into the town engineer for his review and approval.
It's like he's doing some work right now with that.
Yeah, yeah, and he's, I mean, for the number of people that are coming there on a day-to-day basis right now, it's probably not an issue, but it will be at some point in time.
And I think that would be a normal condition within the four corners district to have the parking laid out to meet the minimum calls for the site and for the operation. So, board comfortable with moving forward with that, with that application?
Yes.
Okay. And so, it would be subject to our normal conditions. We'll capture the information that was identified, you know, in the presentation to the board. 400 square foot on the first floor with window displays and then also there'll be a need and an opportunity to come back with some information on the signs that he has not, that he has not totally mapped out yet. So, parking and sign in addition to the other normal items for that matter.
Very good.
All right, anything else, board, for that? Staff, anything else for that particular application? Okay. And Mr. Castello, you will prepare the appropriate paperwork for that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Move on to action item number two, 4,500 square foot mixed use commercial and apartment building at 1861 Penfield Road. Again, we heard this at our last meeting and again, the applicant laid out all the details, hours of operation, uses in the building, number of employees, the apartments that will be associated with that as well. I would ask any additional information received since the public hearing?
I do apologize, the architect did submit a plan, which I will send to you, considering the way I was around today, but he did provide additional windows on the east side of the building. It's very nice and I will get that to you. The other issue that you should be aware of is the fact that as part of the site plan approval, he will need to do some filling on the site to accommodate the parking area. He has graciously accepted a request to take some millings from us from Penfield Road next week. We will be storing them on site and then movement of that material will move around after we send the plans off, so if you see some activity there, you'll know why it happened.
Okay, so that's consistent with the plan, the site plan that was submitted for development of that site identified a certain amount of filling that would have to take place. I think that was confirmed not only by his engineer, but our engineers as well. As part of that, it will still allow for, what is it, proposed to be a walkout apartment on the bottom floor and as part of the overall development. Okay. Board, questions, comments?
No.
No, I think we vetted it pretty well.
Good. Mr. Castello, if you would send that, that updated plan out that shows the additional windows on the, on the east side, that would be good. I think that satisfies a concern that one of our board members may have raised or PRC, I think, I think was part of the PRC comments. So, if you would get that out to the board, that would be good. Anything additional, board? Staff, anything additional on this particular application?
I spoke with his engineer today about the project and I believe they've resolved all the technical issues that we had and we were just talking about the amount of fill that was needed, so he'll provide us with that number in the morning.
Okay, got it. All right. Mr. Castello, you will be able to prepare a resolution for the board?
I will.
Okay, great. Anything else, board?
Just thank you for considering the comments of PRC and taking them into town and making some applications.
Thanks for all the help and guiding me along with it too.
All right, this matter will be before the town board at the legislative session next week. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item number three, 7,200 square foot retail building, 2140, 2146, Fairport, Nine Mile Point Road. And this is the application by Dr. Filon, Prilin Acquisitions LLC and again, heard by the board last, at our last Wednesday's meeting and had vetted out a couple of opportunities during the course of several work sessions here over the last several months. And Mr. Castello, anything new that has come in since the original public hearing, since last week?
No, nothing new.
Okay. Board, questions or comments on this particular application?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we've talked about this at a couple work sessions in the public hearing last week, so I think it's been vetted as completely as possible.
Okay. Mr. Young did appear and just reinforced the fact that no backlit signs and certainly some landscaping to the east to fill any of those gaps in. And then, I think two items that come to my mind that I think we need to put on the table for discussion. One is getting the topsoil pile taken care of so that doesn't sit around, you know, for multiple months or longer. So, I think we need to work on getting that taken care of. The other thing that I think that we need to get addressed is across the street on the Wegmans property, there is, I think, at least one tree that needs to be taken care of and some landscaping that needs to be addressed for that to complete that, that aspect. So, I would say that if the board is inclined to move forward with this, the conditions of approval before final sign-off would be to get, get the Wegmans piece taken care of and then address the topsoil piece as well. Okay, other questions, other comments? Staff, any additional items the board should be aware of that we had not discussed or spoken about?
No.
And so certainly, similar to previous application, signage will have to come back to the board for their, for their ultimate review. And I think we also had talked about some landscaping. I think Dr. Filon indicated the landscaping was going to be similar to the adjacent building and so I'll be looking for that final landscaping review as well.
Right.
Okay. All right, seeing nothing else. Board, no other questions? Staff, no other input? All right, Mr. Castello, again, you will be able to put together a resolution for the next town board meeting.
Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, take us to public works. We have a proposed modification to the sidewalk policy. It's been discussed a couple of times. Mr. Valentine, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, sir. After our last discussion, there was a request for a map to show a possible two-phase or a stepped approach to the sidewalk policy. And taking the map, and I emailed it out to the board previously, but I have a copy up there on the wall, kind of approximated an area, you know, east of 250 is kind of in the designated area as East Penfield, but acknowledging before this board is pending a mixed use area. We kind of offset the 250 piece, you know, if there's development along the 250 corridor with mixed use, if that does move ahead, sidewalks and walkability is a major component of that. So, we kind of just took an offset of that and then as well as, there's pieces on Dublin Road where there's some existing sidewalks, so that kind of stepped out a little bit again. And then on the lower side, you have Fellows Road, Ashland Rise, Arbor Ridge, so again, kind of stepped it out around that. There kind of seemed to be some, some property lines that kind of made some north routes that kind of lined up and there were existing properties in the area. Again, that was kind of a straw man for the board's consideration to look at whether, you know, adopting this as a new map in the sidewalk policy, everything in the east Penfield sidewalk area, there could be an administrative review by staff if it's not a high priority for sidewalks. You know, could continue with the $500 waiver fee in that area of town if they're deemed not necessary. And on the western part of town, you know, we still had pending before the board, you know, some updates to the costs and whether, you know, those are, are, you know, considered or not. But this was kind of our attempt to put together at least a map or at least something to start from and we can debate where that line moves or if it's a three-tiered approach or multiple, but at least, you know, wanted to get some before the board for discussion.
No, and I appreciate the mark, the effort, because, you know, that was sort of, I mean, that captures what I was sort of driving at last time, which was that there's a portion of town where there's no intention to have sidewalks, there are no sidewalks, so.
Yeah, we've captured everything red just to pop out showing existing sidewalks. They're there and it was not coming last time.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the line where you've sort of put it makes sense to me. I mean, I think that's fine, so a tiered approach, you know, I think, I think is valid in a sense.
Obviously, a waiver can be sought, you know, anywhere within town and that would come back before this board for considerations of us west of the line and it's still not, you know, even necessary, obviously a waiver could be granted. Just looking at the eastern, you know, portions, we don't have.
We're not sure what feels though, you know, I mean, it is a park and we always say we want sidewalks to parks, but that's far enough off though.
I mean, obviously, this is a living document and, you know, the board can revisit this as development continues out, we can revisit or re-update this map.
The only thing I would say to that is that there are only two state roads heading east, right? Atlantic and 441?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, I would just say that, you know, at some point, you know, if, for some reason, the state comes in and wants to put sidewalks in as a part of a redevelopment program or there's some need to do that, I mean, on the state roads, I could see a reason to do that, otherwise.
Or some opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, otherwise I can't see any reason to really have them going up and down other roads, with the exception of perhaps 286 and 441.
Okay.
Yeah.
Looks good.
Thank you.
So, I'll move ahead with finalizing this. What's the board's thoughts on the costs and the spreadsheet portion of it? Obviously, I got to kind of write up the document and I can, you know, put those changes in, but I've kind of held off on, you know, rewriting the document or incorporating those pieces and just to kind of see what the board's comfort level was with the rest of it.
So, board, we've talked about it on previous occasions. I think the most, the recent, the most recent one was the 50%, I think is what we were, we were looking at and I think the board felt might be the most palatable overall. Is that still something that you feel is reasonable? Would you like to see anything?
It was 50% on single-family residential?
Well, it's, it was 50%, I mean, obviously, full compliance.
For, well, for one, for one parcel, one property on one parcel.
We looked at 50% of the construction cost and we based the construction cost on the current county bid price. Each year, that would adjust, so 50% of the construction cost and then we did a second check just as a per-lot basis, so if their cost exceeded that 50% or that cost, we had a cap for a single-family lot of $5,000 per lot. So, if 20-lot subdivision, obviously it would be over the 20-lot subdivision. It was just looking at if you get a single large parcel, you don't do the, you know, bear the penalize or bear the cost on one parcel. If it's a developer, a large development, then they can, you know, just play that cost over, you know, multiple properties. Again, that was just kind of a second check with the $5,000 is, you know, kind of a cap that, you know, one property.
Large lot or quarter lot.
A corner lot, you know, would have a lot of frontage and, you know, could have an exceptional amount of cost to that.
Okay, that makes sense. However, there's still, I just want to get clarification on that, if I were to go buy a property on Jackson Road as opposed to taking a property and subdividing it into 10 parcels, so I just, because then the developer has, it's different than one person buying a lot.
Single-family residential.
So, I'm okay with a 50% cap, waiver and cap on a one-person, one lot. However, I don't know if I'm there on the development aspect of it, so I guess where is?
Yeah, but it's going to be a development, that'll be a whole.
Development would include the internal roads as well.
That would open that whole.
Obviously, the cost goes up for the internal as well. They, we just basically assess all the external roads and all the internal roads for full compliance.
Right.
The cost is 50% of that and then the cap still goes per lot, so if it's 20 lots, it's still a maximum of $5,000 per lot, which could add up to $100,000 if that's.
Do you happen to have a copy of the spreadsheet?
I think they'll be mindful of being consistent with prospective property owners.
So, that was kind of the two of the recent one, one single-family lot.
Right.
And then one development lot.
Right. And then the development lot we were talking about.
So, it's not a, the developer wouldn't be capped at $5,000.
Right.
He's not.
That's what I was trying.
Okay, $5,000 per property would be the cap. So, if he's got a 20-lot subdivision, that could be $100,000 is his cap. If it's a 50, so it goes up proportionally, it's just per each lot. So, if it's a one-lot subdivision, that's the cap. If it's a 20 lot, it's per lot, so again, you'd add the five times 20.
So, it's compounded essentially.
It's compounded.
Yeah.
But it's just kind of another check just to see if, you know, kind of keep some consistency.
Because I'd be concerned if we were being, if we were being inconsistent in how we're treating landowners for, of lots, you know, by, for it should be a developer and not a developer.
Yep.
It's somewhat risky.
Yeah. And I can write it up and obviously have something before the board to look at, kind of have some pieces to it. We'll do some changes to that and then have something before the board to take a look at.
Okay.
That's it.
So, let's, let's get that finalized, we'll get that out. The board will have one final review and then we'll look to need to do a resolution for that because it'll be in probably, actually a public hearing.
Public hearing on the document.
Now, we're going to have to do a public hearing because it'll be an amendment too.
Yep.
And we'll need to hold that.
So, it's going to be backwards.
Make sure we do that and then we can then schedule a hearing from there.
Okay.
Okay. Great, thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. The next item is the retaining walls and so two, two items for the board. First, let's talk about the Five Mile Line Road replacement. The board authorized a quote not to exceed $8,923.89 for that wall replacement in the four corners. There was an additional expense of $1,731.99 for the replacement of the fence on the top to do that, but because the board had authorized not to exceed in order to increase that, we'll have to bring that back to the board to amend that. Now, the overall cost of the project will be within the budget because the cost of the material that was originally specced out was less and so the overall project will not exceed the dollars. However, because we did do it by resolution, we have to amend that resolution, so you'll see that. And then the wall on Atlantic Avenue, there was an added cost and again, because we did it by resolution not to exceed $19,500, that did go over by $364. And again, because we authorized it, there will be an amendment to that. So, the. So the, the board will see a resolution that'll come in amending both of those for that amount. And just wanted to make sure one had an opportunity to be aware of that and then two, okay with bringing that forward for our next legislative session.
I thought that was the two very important repairs.
Okay.
Particularly in the Four Corners.
All right, very good. That, that brings us to item number three, which is a second curb cut at fine Renwick Run.
Slowly.
That's very, you pause, you pause. And Mr. Valentine, if you would appropriately tee that up, welcome.
Yes. Was approached about having a second curb cut for this property in order to have a looped driveway. Provided a sketch, kind of a highlighted area in red shows where he's looking to loop his driveway around. Currently, our design criteria allows a second curb cut if it's on a corner lot and it's 25% larger than what the zoning district allows. Obviously, these, these lots are large enough for that, but it's not a corner lot, so it wasn't as easy as an administrative approval for the, for the highway department to issue. So they kicked it to me and then obviously, you know, shared with the property owner that we need to, you know, have a little sketch of that, meet and greet with the town board, a discussion of, you know, what the intent was and then, you know, what your comfort level was with that. I printed off just to see Google Street View maps, you can kind of see from the street aspect of one side or the other. Do you want to kind of share your thoughts and you want to talk to them?
Fair enough. Hello, my name is Chuck Kowalski, property owner of Byd Renwick. We, we're doing some design work at the house. We've, one of the pictures that you can see with the little square with the four circles on it, that's going to be a carport that's getting built at the house additionally now. The reason we're asking to have it actually come out as a curb cut, it's very difficult to wrap this driveway around as, as a circle because it would exit back out on that circle and I think it would look too much of a parking lot if you were to asphalt where that circle is. Also, there's a bunch of trees that I would have to cut down in the front of the lawn if you take a look at the picture in order to make that circle come back and wrap around at the main entrance there. Also, I have a sixth, a son that's in sixth grade. Because the bus stop gets picked up on the main road, on Penfield Center Road there, he tends to walk through the lawn every day. So I figured it would be, you know, something nice to have that paved, especially in the wintertime, instead of walking through the snow and through the grass. Reason being, I think this is aesthetically appeasing to the neighbors rather than having a big circle and then coming back into the circle that's already there. I figured coming out at the corner there where the street naturally has a bend would look more residential than commercial.
Staff, I know you brought this to PRC for their review and council.
Yeah, I think our only comment would be just to step it back maybe five or 10 feet from the corner. I understand the intent there, but just to make sure we're not impacting the neighbor's drainage.
Right.
Where the, you know, the extent of the curb cut doesn't, you know, go over their property.
Sure.
But just maintain the drainage of that.
Absolutely.
That was kind of staff's comments, if we could just kind of cut that corner off a little bit or, you know, just sneak that back in a little bit just so we're not impacting the neighborhood.
Five feet from the property line.
Is the neighbor aware of your intention at this point?
I've mentioned it to him, yes. They didn't have anything negative to say about it.
I know we've had some questions about, you know, drainage in that neighborhood and we'd have to, you know, put a driveway culvert in.
Yeah, we, and then that's something that we would do, right.
Yep, it kind of drains down that shoulder and I just know, you know, drainage has been a sensitive issue in the neighborhood and would want to do something to...
So is it between the trees?
You can see his existing driveway and then it's on the other side of that.
It would be on the, it would be on the other side of the trees.
So I took the, the one picture kind of shows his existing driveway going in and then the other picture kind of shows where it would be coming out.
One of the things that we want to do with the way it's, it's drawn there is, is obviously not to cut the trees to keep the neighborhood basically park-like.
Yeah.
Instead of cutting all the trees down and circling back around, you would have to basically cut all those trees out.
Right.
We're going, we're not going to actually...
Just be asphalt.
Just going to be asphalt. We're not going, it's just going over the lawn. We're not going to lose any of the environmental impact in a sense of trees.
No, I appreciate that. You see the trees in the middle of the lawn.
Well, the trees, I, it just gives it a better aesthetic look to the trees rather than cutting them down and then making a parking lot, well, it looks like a strip lawn.
I understand.
You're like an accident over.
It would exit right between the trees, yes, right there. So we would go that way into the house, correct. And no, no trees would be cut down.
Around that.
Yeah, my only question was about having that curb cut or the driveway right on the property line, but it sounds as if you're okay moving it back.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. We, I just kind of drew it to the end of the property line. It's going to cut into the house. So yeah, move it five, 10 feet even would not be an objection on that part.
And thanks for the pictures, too, because another question I had were any trees along that, that property to your, was it to the south or where is it? To the south and just making sure we weren't creating a line drive or anything.
Correct, yes.
It looks pretty open, so.
It's wide open. And again, that was the reason we drew it where we did is, is not to disturb any of the environmental impact. There would be no trees being cut. It would, it would maintain basically the same look and that was the reason of extending out to that part.
It helps the drainage, too.
Yes.
No, you took some time thinking that out. It's obvious.
Okay. This house sat empty for a while.
For two and a half years.
So you've, you've done a tremendous amount of work to bring it back to...
We currently landscaped at the place, obviously, and I think the town actually cut the lawn last year on it.
I think that's what triggered my memory, I think.
Yes, that's the property that the town had to cut the lawn. We, we were in a process, it took us about a year and a half to close on the house because it was a short sale and foreclosure. We offered to cut the lawn, but obviously with the insurance purposes and the bank, the bank did not let us permission to go on the property to cut the lawn and obviously the lawn deteriorated. So obviously, we've cut that, we're in a process of, you know, bringing back the place so it looks livable in a sense.
Yeah, well, congratulations to you for that, for all that ditch you're putting into that, so. Okay, Board, any other questions? Staff, anything additional for that? Mark, you will, you will prepare a letter that'll go back, you know, to the, to the resident so that they have that for their, for their files. And, and then obviously, you know, one of the conditions will be they'll, they'll have to come in to, you know, get their driveway permit from the, from the DPW, but, and they'll want to, you'll want to work with them as it relates to the cover pipe and drainage just to make sure that it's, you know, right, right for us, right for them.
Yep.
Okay, great.
And then you put the five foot, and again, just for the record, it would be five feet for the property line is where you guys want it.
Yeah, I, I'd ask you to work with...
Obviously, correct, but that would be another thing, so it would be five feet.
Moving it from the property line avoids any concerns about being on private property or the other, your other neighborhood property.
And with the angle, it would gradually go within 50 feet, within probably 20 feet of the property line, so it's not going to be on the property line at all.
And then, and then obviously, the other component is always the drainage, so not creating problems for yourself, but also for the, for the town and plowing and things like that, so.
Sure.
And I would just encourage you to make sure your neighbor knows what you're doing and when you're doing it, so...
Well, everything that we're doing there the neighbor knows, I've been in contact with them pretty much and everything.
Good, because sometimes when you catch them by surprise, they call the town hall and it just, it's just easier to let them know ahead of time.
Not a problem.
Especially with equipment and stuff like that.
Right, well, they see us doing work out there, so they know what we're doing.
Good.
Okay. Plus, it keeps an eye on it for us, too, when we're not around.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Yep.
Have a good evening. Thanks for coming in. Okay, we have no other action items, so we'll move on to informational items.